16th, 2024 Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, Chairman of the Board, and we'd like to welcome all of you tonight for our meeting. To my right is our Vice Chair, Dr. Cherry, and I'd like to ask our other members to introduce themselves.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Todd Kemal, Southland Township.
Doc Lovely, Gastonia Township.
AM Stevens, Rivermin Township.
Brent Moore, Crowers Mountain Township.
Josh Crisp, Dallas Township.
All right, thank you. Our first order of business is to have our invocation, and I would like to ask Pastor Ray Hardy from the Point Church in Belmont to lead our invocation.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for these that have gathered together. We pray for the 30,000 blessings that you've given to us in this county, those children that are taking their next steps in learning what they need to do to succeed in this life. We pray, God, as we begin the process of making decisions to make their lives better and their environment better in which to learn, I pray that you would give guidance to, first of all, their teachers and assistant teachers on the front lines, those that are custodians at their schools, those that are administrators at their schools, those here in the seats of academic leadership here in the OCL office, and also to this board. Father, thank you for all those that give of their time and their talent and their treasure so that students might be able to be maximized in their lives, and we thank you, Lord, for this privilege. And Father, as we enter into this day and this week with many decisions to be made, we pray the prayer that the old sainted person prayed when he said, "O Maker of the mighty deep, we're on our vessels fair; upon our life's adventures keep thy faithful watch and care. In Thee we trust whate'er befall; the sea is great and our boats are small. We know not where the secret tides will help us or delay, nor where the lurking tempest tides, nor where the skies are gray. But in Thee we trust whate'er befall; the sea is great, our boats are small." Thank you, Father. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ray, and thank you for what you do for our community. Now I'd like to ask our Superintendent, Dr. Morgan Hushard, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Charlotte, Samantha, and Nash please come forward from Hawksnest Steam Academy, and they have agreed to lead us in our pledge.
Pledge. And pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlotte, Samantha, and Nash. Our next order...
Our next order of business is adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chair, before the agenda is adopted, I would like to make the motion to add the artificial turf project for Chapel High School's baseball field, also known as Buckfry Field, to the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
The issue that I've got with approving it tonight, which I don't believe we have any, I believe everybody on the board will support it, the issue that I've got is the operation... I was called two days before the operations meeting. It's too late to get on the agenda because we send our agendas out 48 hours before. So basically, there wasn't any processes and procedures followed to get us to this point. Like I said, I don't believe, I'm 100% for it, but I want to make sure that our staff has time to vet everything, to look over everything, to make sure that it's being done up to our standards. So I don't know if we can make a motion, addition to that motion that we approve it, pending all these things are done.
I can add that to the motion, pending that everything is done according to Gaston County Board.
Because basically, you know, Ms. Harvey does over the operations, and after several conversations with her, she's saying with me, she was made aware of it, you know, basically two days before our meeting.
Right, it was too late to add that.
Right, right, and basically they bring it to them, to me it would be like a Bushers Club saying, hey, we've raised the money to build this field house, we want to start on it, without ever coming to us and saying, this is what we require and this is what we need to have, to get it done.
What processes need to take place?
Well, when you look at, when you look at, basically, we're letting these folks come in and put turf on our field, but we don't have any, and we don't even know what they're going to do, we don't have a scope of work.
Mr. Chair, point of order, not to cut you off. I think that we probably need to, just whether we need to adopt a discussion on the agenda or not, and then have this discussion during that period.
Okay. You all want to do that, or you? You're good, add it to the agenda and then we'll have a discussion.
And I don't believe Ms. Lovelace's motion was to accept it, I think it was to add it for discussion.
Okay, okay. Okay, you all good? So, that said, I made a motion, you did, to add to the agenda for discussion. Okay, all in favor? All right, now it'll be item 12, right, Sonia? And we'll move consent at 13. Item 12, we'll move consent at 13. Okay, our next order of business to hear good news happening in our schools. Mr. Todd Hagan, what good news you have to share tonight?
Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the Board, and Superintendent Hushard. It is a pleasure to present our good news to the Board of Education for the month of September. First, we would like to recognize Hawksnest Steam Academy and invite Principal Nicole Lawson and Teachers Jessica Blake, Jenna Markwith, Dara Pressnell, and Taylor White to come forward.
Lawson with you this evening?
She is not.
She is not here. Well, I think it would be, I don't think it would be out of order to invite Tammy Meams to come forward. Ms. Meams was the principal, former principal at Hawksnest Steam Academy, now our principal at Forestview High School, and I know that Ms. Meams had a hand in what I'm about to announce to the public tonight. So we are pleased, Board members, this evening to announce that once again Hawksnest Steam Academy is a North Carolina STEM school of distinction. Since 2014, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education have honored schools for outstanding efforts in STEM education, which focuses on science, technology, engineering, and math. Being a STEAM school, Hawksnest also focuses on the arts. Hawksnest opened in August 2016 as Gaston County's only elementary magnet school focused on STEM and STEAM, and it has been our vision all along for Hawksnest to be a model school for STEM and STEAM education. Hawksnest first earned the North Carolina STEM School of Distinction Award in 2020. A school must go through a rigorous renewal process every four years, and Hawksnest qualified to receive the honor again. There are only 21 schools in the state with the active model STEM school designation, and Hawksnest is one of them. STEM schools of distinction are also recognized for their leadership and commitment to fostering creativity and teamwork. The staff at Hawksnest works hard every day to help students develop essential STEM skills and attributes needed for success in today's world. We congratulate Hawksnest Steam Academy on earning this well-deserved state-level recognition. Your dedication to excellence in STEM education is truly commendable, and we look forward to having a school-wide celebration sometime in October to bring attention to our North Carolina STEM School of Distinction in Gaston County. Congratulations.
You know, I do, I think a fair good job is making my way around this county because I love it so much. You hear a lot of bad people want to share with you about the school system and what we don't do right. This is proof right here that we do some things right, and we do them really, really right. And I'm just excited to be able to give you guys this plaque for your hard work and for giving our students an excellent education that is just amazing. It's only one of 21 in the entire state, but we've got one of them here. And guys, I understand this in 100 counties in this great state of North Carolina, but we got one of the best schools in, out of that. So I want you to give another round of applause. I mean, I need to get my future made with this great group.
Let the blonde hold it.
You want all that? I almost slapped it. Here, I will take that back. I'll take it from the educators.
Thank you. Thank you. One more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, hang on one second, hang on one second. Go around here and let the board congratulate you.
Perfect. All right, y'all, he's here, kids. Kids, we need to go, we're going to shake your hands.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Congratulations.
He's smart, he's like, uh-uh. Congrats.
Congratulations.
Great job. Thank you for the dedication, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate you.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for what you did there.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for what you do.
No, I want the candy. No, I'm kidding. Shake my hand for real. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm... Mr. us, but we had other staff members, four of the teachers that I mentioned, they're here for another honor that we'll mention in just a moment, but we certainly had more than four in that group with the students and the teachers, so thank you all for being here with us this evening. Next, we would like to invite a group of students to come forward. At this time, we would like to introduce Autumn Queen, Bannick Scott, Jazzy DeRosa, Amara Bailey, Alyssa Carpenter, Marissa Lemoine, Alexis Odell, and Sweet Nguyen. These students are from the Gaston Early College High School and the Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences, and they have been elected to serve on the Student Government Association at Gaston College for the 2024-25 academic year, which is a significant achievement. Autumn Queen will serve as President, Bannick Scott as the Vice President, Jazzy DeRosa as the Treasurer, Amara Bailey, Alyssa Carpenter, Marissa Lemoine, Alexis Odell, and Sweet Nguyen are the Senators that have been elected to the SGA. As students in our two early college high schools, which are located on the Gaston College campus in Dallas, they have an opportunity to step up, get involved, and be leaders, not only for their school, but for the college community as well. Their role is to foster student leadership and involvement, address student concerns, and organize social and educational activities. They work to support individual growth, promote good citizenship, build school spirit, and enhance the college's image and educational quality. For example, the students are participating in a variety of special events, including promoting National Cheese Pizza Day, Organizing Game Day, Hosting Club Day, Observing Constitution Day, Coordinating a Blood Drive, Celebrating the College's 60th Birthday, and Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. We are very proud of our students who were elected to the Student Government Association at Gaston College, and we wish them continued success in their pursuit of leadership this school year. Congratulations.
So we had the honor of awarding some of the same recognitions last year to a group of students, and I think it's really important for everyone to understand that these young folks have made the choice to enroll in rigorous programs that if they play their cards right, they have an opportunity to be in high school for five years, and that seems like a lot. But they also have an opportunity to walk out of there with an associate's degree before they graduate from high school, right? So that is impressive in and of itself. These folks have definitely shown themselves as leaders, and this is just not student government for these two high schools. This is student government for the college as a whole, and this is a big achievement, and these folks are working hard, and they deserve our appreciation. So thank you all. So all, I'm hoping these are enough. I think that's you, Governor. That's you? All right. Did a good job, Mr. Hagan, or they paid attention. Where are you? There you go. Thank you. And Alyssa, that's you, all right. And Marissa, all right, I'm down to two.
Oh, my God. The lucky girl.
Alexis. And there you go. There you go. So let's get some pictures, and we'll invite the principals and anybody else that's with them here to come up and join us. How you want us, sir?
That's good, you go right there.
And while we're waiting on it, let's make sure we give these folks another round of applause.
Liam Cook is the principal of Gaston Early College High School, and Beverly Bowman is the principal of the Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences.
Congratulations. That's amazing. Congratulations. I like your shirt.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, you're welcome. Congratulations.
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 Hey, good to see you. Thank you for your work you do with them. Hey, good to see you.
Thank you so much.
What's up, JC? How you doing, brother? Good to see you.
How are you? Good to see you. Thank you.
Next this evening, we're excited to recognize Rory McCorkle from Forestview High School and Mackensley Turner from North Gaston High School, and we would like for them to come forward at this time. Both Rory and Mackensley are winners in the Gaston County Board of Elections I Voted sticker competition. Their art designs will be used on the I Voted stickers given to voters in Gaston County in the upcoming general election. There were 68 entries from 12 schools in the sticker design contest, so it was very competitive, and we are very proud to see Rory and Mackensley emerge as the winners. They are talented students and artists, and we are so glad that our community will get to see just how creative they are. Please join me in congratulating these students on their creative artistic ability. Their artwork will be seen by many as citizens go to the polls this fall. Congratulations to you.
Congratulations, girls, and I see that you got some sandwiches for us. I voted for Gaston, and that's beautiful. Can I see yours? Oh, I vote, I loved it. Or you didn't give me one. I did one right early, and I'll keep it and I'll wear it to the phone, and I'll say, you can't vote again. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, this is for Rory, and this is for your Rory, okay, W. Wright, and Mackensley. Thank you so much, girls. Folks, these are beautiful. I can't wait till you get to wear one, I get to wear one. Thank you so much.
We'll also get a picture with our staff.
Let's get to the back, so your principals and teachers can get in there. Pretty. Love it.
Just slide, shift down a little bit, there you go.
Are you people going here? Let the board congratulate you, ready?
Good job.
Rory.
Yes, yes, there you go, Doc. Yes, we have one.
Yeah. We have one for Ms. Lovelace. Yeah, Ms. Lovelace. Congratulations.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good.
I like her.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
We're going, we're going springing on them. Surprise!
Chairman Ramsey, we had planned to invite the all-state cheerleaders to be with us tonight, but they will be here in October, so we look forward to recognizing the all-state cheerleaders in October. So to conclude our good news, we would like to invite the recipients of the Glenn Sisters' Legacy Fund for Educators grant, which is presented by the Gaston County Education Foundation, to come forward. With us are Rebecca Stover of Springfield Elementary, Mary McCraw of Gaston Early College High School, and a group of Hawksnest Steam Academy teachers who you saw earlier, Jessica Blake, Jenna Markwith, Dara Pressnell, and Taylor White. We'd like for them to come forward at this time. The Glenn Sisters Legacy Fund for Education Grant program provides financial assistance for educators in Gaston County schools who are seeking continuing education, certification and recertification, and professional development courses that have...
Yes.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good. I like her. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Congratulations.
We're gonna spring it on them. Surprise.
Chairman Ramsey, we had planned to invite the all-state cheerleaders to be with us tonight, but they will be here in October, so we look forward to recognizing the all-state cheerleaders in October. So, to conclude our good news, we would like to invite the recipients of the Glenn Sisters' Legacy Fund for Educators grant, which is presented by the Gaston County Education Foundation, to come forward. With us are Rebecca Stover of Springfield Elementary, Mary McCraw of Gaston Early College High School, and a group of Hawksnest Steam Academy teachers who you saw earlier, Jessica Blake, Jenna Markwith, Dara Pressnell, and Taylor White. We'd like for them to come forward at this time. The Glenn Sisters' Legacy Fund for Education Grant program provides financial assistance for educators in Gaston County schools who are seeking continuing education, certification and recertification, and professional development courses that have a direct influence on classroom instruction. Ms. Stover received a grant for the Certified Trauma and Resilience Specialist in Education Program. Ms. McCraw received a grant for the National Science Teachers Association Professional Development Institute. Our teachers from Hawksnest Steam Academy are using the grant to fund Orton Gillingham training, which is used for teaching students with dyslexia, to help the students in mastering language skills through structured, direct, multisensory, and individualized instruction. Additionally, Victoria Kaiser from the Highland School of Technology cannot be with us this evening. However, Ms. Kaiser received a grant for the Advanced Placement AP Summer Institute Computer Science Principals Program. We would like to congratulate these teachers on receiving the Glenn Sisters' Legacy Fund for Education grant, and we would like to thank the Gaston County Education Foundation, in particular Amy Spencer and the others on the board with the Gaston County Education Foundation, for supporting Gaston County schools and investing in our teachers, classrooms, and special programs in important and meaningful ways.
I've been around the Gaston County foundation for a very long time, but I did some homework because I'm getting older and I forget. So, I found a quote that's online, and I wanna read this because this is the epitome of the three-day war. They weren't much older than I am now, so I'll go ahead and preface that now, but this is a quote from them. "We did without many things that we might have had, but it has given us a lot of satisfaction to know that we could and did take care of ourselves without asking anyone for help. Our sole purpose in making this foundation was to try to have any money that we might leave go where it's needed the most and will do the most of it." And you just heard Todd tell you what these amazing features could, so they continue in their legacy to do good that benefits our system. So, I think it's just, it thrills me that their legacy lives on and on and on, and I encourage you, but I have the knowledge if you wanna hear it, I encourage you to see what their initial investment, when they died, and they died at 93 and 98 years old, and in 1971 was when the foundation started, and their initial investment was $25,000. It's now over $6 million, and they have given, how much have they given? I'll put y'all on the spot. Dollar, do you know?
A lot.
They've given about that much. So, they were two of 10 children, and almost everyone in their family greatly succeeded. A surgeon, a doctor of education, one was a librarian, one was, and I'm trying to figure this out, Doc and Morgan might know, one of them was, they lived over near Chapel Grove, and they changed me, they grew up in that area, Gaston County, but one was a, what did they call it? An elementary supervisor for Gaston County Rural Schools for 15 years. So, I'm gonna equate that to an administrator or principal. So, they all were successful people. So, it's really an interesting story about their family. So, on that note, I'll hush, but it thrills my heart to know that their tribe continues to benefit our school system. What a great gift. Okay, Taylor.
That way.
Dara.
Jenna.
Jessica. Mary. And Rebecca. Can't wait to hear how this benefits y'all. Thank you for what you do for our children every day. Another round of applause. They are instrumental in making sure that these funds get to the people that truly use them.
You sound like you called your parents up here.
Come on.
We don't mind.
Seriously, any principals?
Thank you.
I had no idea. Was she at the bar?
Great job. I'm not sure. I'm flying away.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna have to watch the song again.
They didn't call it.
I got my red face on, going with the stress of the work.
Hey, nice to see y'all. Good to see y'all.
Thank you.
Hey, they're frank enough.
Three boys.
Last ones out.
Yes, ma'am.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to watch the song again.
They didn't call it.
I got my red face on, going with the stress of the work.
Hey, nice to see y'all.
Good to see y'all.
Thank you.
Hey, they're frank enough.
Three boys.
Last ones out.
Yes, ma'am.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
And thank you, Chairman Ramsey. That completes our good news for the month of September.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our Classroom Moment. The Classroom Moment gives the board the opportunity to see an example of good things happening in our schools every day. This Classroom Moment will be led by our Elementary Director Shannon Hullett, and will inform us about the K-12 science standards that are being implemented in the classroom this year. Ms. Hullett?
Yes.
Do I need to put it in presentation mode? Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Hushard. I'm excited to be here tonight to just talk a little bit about the new science standards and a really cool tool that all of our elementary schools get to experience this year. So, in July 2023, the State Board of Education adopted new K-12 science standards, and they are to be implemented this school year. Tonight, I'm gonna share just a little bit about those standards. So, what is different? What changed? So, one of the big changes is the strands that make up the North Carolina Science Standard Course of Study, those have changed, and they were polled from, keep going, sorry. They were polled from the K-12 science frameworks, so the strands are different across K-12. And another big change that is present in our standards is you'll now see the presence of the science and engineering practices and the disciplinary core ideas. So, there's three domains that make up our K-12 standards, and those 11 new strands, those are represented here, so that's new and different. Those will be represented across all classrooms, K-12. But this is the heart of the change. It's the science and engineering practices. There are eight practices that now all students, K-12, will experience each and every day in the science classroom. Students will engage in these throughout their K-12 experience. They grow in complexity over our grades and across courses. They represent what students are expected to do. It's not a curriculum, it's not a program, it's just how they should engage in the content. They're not standalone. They intentionally overlap, and they interconnect with one another, and they're very language-heavy. So, we wanna see students talking, engaging, and hands-on experience around the content of science. So, this is what a standard looks like, and right behind the objective number in pink, you're gonna see the presence of the new science and engineering practices. So, every single standard now, you will see one of the eight practices that represent, again, how a student needs to demonstrate understanding of that particular content. So, with this particular standard, you can see it says, "Construct an explanation to summarize the ocean's influences on weather and climate in North Carolina." So, it's telling you how we want them to demonstrate understanding of that particular content. So, we got teachers ready for this change this summer on the back-to-school workdays. They came in, and we engaged them in some great professional development around the changes and what that should look like in the classroom. We were excited because even some of our principals, you see Dr. Kessler in the picture, they attended the training as well to grow their knowledge as an instructional leader. This is a great document that DPI put out for our teachers. It's called a crosswalk document, and what it does is it puts the 2009 standards beside the new 2023 standards, so teachers can see right away what's new, what's different, what do I need to pay attention to. And the notes section is what they absolutely love because it really pulls out anything that they really need to be aware of. Now, this standard for fifth grade, it's been a tough one for us, and teachers have always said those jet streams, those golf streams, they're the things that our students just struggle with. And I think DPI heard feedback from across the state because, as you can see, that's been pulled out of the fifth grade standards, and it's been moved into our middle schools. So, our fifth grade teachers were super excited about that change. But every grade level, this document has been provided for them, and teachers are able to look at it just to help them get as familiar as they can be with the changes with the new standards. But with this particular standard, the heart now is really analyzing and interpreting weather systems to compare daily seasonal changes and weather conditions. So, we knew this was a standard our students grappled with, and we were able to find a little bit of funding to put an exciting tool into the hands of our students and in our classrooms, and it's called a weather station. So, we are gonna take a trip right now to WA Best to get you to see this exciting new tool that's gonna help our students engage in this content. Hello, I'm Laura Clark. I'm the proud principal of WA Best Elementary School. I'm excited to welcome you to our school to share a snapshot of how our students are learning the science of weather through our new weather station program. The ability of our students to be actively engaged with the weather station in and of measures wind speed helps them to better understand the world around them while increasing their curiosity and critical thinking skills. I'm excited to introduce you to one of our fifth grade teachers, Ms. Willis, who will share more details with you about our weather station program.
Hi, I'm Sherri Willis, one of the fifth grade science teachers here at WA Best. Our weather station allows students to collect real-time data on temperature, wind speed, rainfall, and more. We begin our school day focused on weather.
70 degrees Fahrenheit.
Students document their observations and findings from the weather station in their data notebooks. They're learning how to observe patterns and predict weather changes based on their findings, which makes science come to life.
I like using our new weather station because I can see how fast the wind's blowing and learn how it affects weather. I'm also excited because I have one at home, too.
We're learning how to measure temperature and rainfall, and then we compare the results with other classes. It's fun seeing how the weather changes every day.
What makes the weather station cool is that we get to do the same stuff real meteorologists do. It's like we're real scientists.
The weather station program provides experiential opportunities for our students to engage in hands-on activities and collaborations. By collecting and analyzing real weather data, they're just not learning from textbooks, they're becoming scientists themselves, making learning both meaningful and fun. This program is just one example of how at WA Best, we're inspiring success and a lifetime So, we are excited about this new tool and how it's gonna engage our students in the content of weather, and we hope when you're out visiting schools, you ask to see the weather station. It's pretty cool, isn't it? And then jump into some fifth grade classrooms and talk to those students, and get them to talk to you about how they're using that data from the weather stations to analyze and interpret those weather patterns, because we're gonna see lots of growth in that area at the end of the school year. So, thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
So, I think you just alluded to that, but all of our elementary schools have a weather station.
Yes, we do. And we're really kind of excited because our fifth grade classrooms are using it, but some of our principals have taken the opportunity to expand it across the school, and on their morning announcements, they're talking about the weather station because you can't miss it, right? So, students are asking about it, so some of our instructional leaders have done a great job of just integrating it into the natural day, so that's been really cool to see.
Did they predict the rain today?
I'm not sure. That's a great question. All right, thank you.
Thank, yes, Ms. Guts.
In comparison with the 209 standards? And the newer ones allow the students to use their higher-order thinking, and I see sentences in there as well, and I think when we look at the difference and allow our children to have more personal lives in the collaboration, I just thank us all. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank all our teachers for what they're doing in the classroom each and every day across our district. The next item on our agenda is public expression, and we do have two or three people signed up before they speak. We will, at this time, the board will hear comments from citizens about the matter of public concern related to our school system. Our board policy sets aside the first 30 minutes of a regular monthly meeting for citizens to address the board. Before we hear from the public, let me outline the rules of procedures. Citizens wishing to make a comment and who have completed a request to speak, form prior to the beginning of the meeting, will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone to make their comments. Citizen will state their name and an address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Members of the board do not respond to public expression during public comment period. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential personnel matters. Speakers who wish to give materials to the board will hand it to our clerk. The chair rules on all points of order during public expression. Our first person to sign up was Stephanie Franks. Is she here? Okay. Pamela Morgan Stern, is she here? Okay, you can come up.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. It was just wonderful to see these kids this evening, so happy, and the teachers just are doing a fabulous job. So, that was wonderful. My name is Pam Morgan Stern, and I live in Cramerton. I'm at 412 Major Run, and I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen, but I'm also a candidate. I'm running for the North Carolina House Seat 109. So, I've been out, you know, in the neighborhoods and talking to, you know, friends, families, and most of them have students, family, kids, you know, in, within the school system here, public school system. So, I wanted to address something that came up last week, and it, I know you can't comment on it, on it tonight, but it was something that was circulating about an 11-year-old who made some threats, and there were two, the only thing I could find was on the Gaston Government website, but I couldn't find anything addressing it on the Gaston, you know, County Board of Education, their website. But I just wanna read to you what they said, and this, again, was on the North Carolina, I mean, on the Gaston Gov website, and this happened last week. And it said, "Gaston County Police Department has identified and arrested an 11-year-old in connection with the threats posted on social media involving several county area schools. During the investigation, the 11-year-old admitted to posting the threats on social media. The suspect will be charged with multiple counts of communicating threats of mass violence on educational property." Several agencies assisted in the investigation, including Gaston County Schools, Lowell Police Department, Cramerton Police Department, Gaston County District Attorney's Office, and NCSBI, the investigation. And it said, "No further information will be released due to the suspect's age," and there were no further threats. But what was circulating out on social media after that, and I don't know if any of you have seen this, but it looked like a parent... have seen this, but it looked like a parent, and all it says is Officer slash E U D Y. And his comment was, and I'm just reading this because I would like to get some clarity, maybe, I guess that won't happen tonight, but maybe in an email or a statement. Let me get this straight. Gaston County Schools, a kid makes a verbal threat to unalive students, saying, "I'm going to pull the fire alarm and taking them out as they come out, as they come running out." Just last week, I find out today, the same kid is back in school and you put them in my son's class. Not only did you put them in my son's class, you told the kids in my son's class to be nice and to, and to be nice to the kids. There's more to it. So I know that's about all I can get out for now, but really, it's about, you know, making sure our kids are safe and that you have the funding and resources that you need. So I think I will address it more, address it further in an email. But thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is approval, oh, that's right, sorry, Barb, Barbie Stokes.
Barbie Stokes, Belmont, North Carolina. I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge tomorrow is Constitution Day. It was 237 years ago tomorrow that our U.S. Constitution was signed. And I just wanted to express appreciation to Gaston County Schools for purchasing pocket constitutions for students. I do have several copies, plenty for all of y'all here tonight, parents at home who are interested in a copy of the Constitution for their child or for their family. It's something that we should all be familiar with, study, really, because it's a short document and, but requires our attention because it does express our individual rights as citizens. But I just wanted to share a couple of quotes from a couple of our founding fathers. This is from Thomas Paine. Those who expect to reap the blessings of freedom must, like men, undergo the fatigues of supporting it. This is from Samuel Adams. If ever the time should come when vain and aspiring men shall possess the highest seats in government, our country will stand in need of its experienced patriots to prevent its ruin. Those are meaningful to me. The framers' goal was to find the right balance between too much political power and none at all. After all, they were declaring independence from Great Britain's tyrannical King George. The U.S. Constitution accomplished this by creating branches of government. The three branches, legislative, executive, and judicial. And our country, you know, is the greatest experiment in civilian-led government, more commonly known as we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval and correction amendments on August 19, 2024, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Demmon, second?
Second.
Cherry. Any discussion? All in favor? The man is approved. All right. The next item on the agenda is our operation committee report. It's made up of Chair Brent Moore, Lee Demmon, Doc Cherry, and A.M. Stevens. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Cherry, Doc Cherry will give that report.
All right.
Okay. The operations committee met at Central Office, in the Central Office Boardroom on Monday, September 9, 2024, at 8:30. Our agenda and discussion included the following. Executive Director Beth Super, Executive Director of HR, Beth Super provided an update on employee staffing. Assistant Superintendent Bessie Harvey, who is over operations, provided an update on all the summer projects. She also provided an update on the emergency radio project. Associate Superintendent Gary Hoskins gave an update on the school bonds. Mr. Hoskins also presented an update on the state budget. That that it is. Mr. Hoskins will present his annual budget for this year at our October Operations Committee meeting for information and for approval at the October Board of Education meeting. We will be making ongoing amendments and revisions to our budget as needed. The committee is recommending for approval of the following contracts on the consent agenda tonight. The Hunter Hus High School cooling tower replacement, GoGuardian software, and contract transportation. Assistant Superintendent Rebecca Powers provided an overview of student assignment, school choice, and pathways. Board members will provide feedback on the district's programs and services. The committee was invited to join the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting to hear the updates on the 23-24 state data results, which will also be presented later during this meeting. Discussion occurred concerning the meeting location for the November 4, 2024 committee meetings due to the board meeting being used for a voting location. The next operations committee meeting will be held on Monday, October 7, at 8:30 a.m. at the Central Office location. That's not, yes, that's correct. Thank for a minute. And that is our report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. The next item on the agenda is a report from our Curriculum and Instruction Committee. The members of that committee is our Chair Josh Crisp, Doc Guthrie, Robbie Lovelace, and Todd Kenlaw. Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Lovelace is going to give us her report this time.
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee reports September 9, 2024. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met at the Central Office Boardroom on Monday, September 9, at 11:30. Those in attendance were Chairman Josh Crisp, Doc Guthrie, Todd Kenlaw, and Robbie Lovelace. Our agenda and discussions included the following. Executive Director Beth Super provided an update on employee staffing. Assistant Superintendent Bessie Harvey provided an update on our summer projects. Associate Superintendent Tanya Kells reported that the teacher pathway grant has been submitted, and we will receive notification in December if we will receive a grant. Michael Faust provided an update on the 2024-25 local testing program. This item is on the consent agenda tonight. Tanya Kells and Kelly Cunningham provided an update on the 2023-24 state data results. The information will be shared during the regular meeting. Executive Directors reviewed the principal support tool and the K-12 academic pathway to academic results handout. Assistant Superintendent Rebecca Powers provided an overview of student assignment, school choice, and pathways. Board members will provide feedback on the district's programs and services. Discussion occurred concerning changing the start time of the committee meeting to noon, beginning with the October meeting and moving forward. Discussion occurred concerning the meeting location for the November 4, 2024 committee meeting due to the boardroom being used as a voting location. The next Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting will be held on Monday, October 7, 2024, at 12:00 noon in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovelace. All right. The next item on the agenda is our 2023-2024 state results and path forward. This is an information item, and Tanya Kell and Kelly Cunningham.
All right, good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, and Superintendent Hushard. Again, I'm Kelly Cunningham, Chief Accountability Officer. And tonight, I will be sharing with you the official end-of-year results from the 23-24 school year. So within this presentation, you'll find an overview of the North Carolina accountability model. And then we will share the results that were released from the State Board of Education on September 4. So those are the official results from the 23-24 school year. Just a reminder, this is going to highlight for us areas where we did well, other areas that will be focused for this upcoming school year. Gives us a clear picture of what is going well in the schools, but also areas that will need additional support as we move forward. In the presentation, we're going to focus primarily on what we see in the district's level data, meaning district-level trends and patterns. But just wanted to acknowledge that there are certainly differences amongst individual schools. And so many of those schools demonstrated individual improvements and certainly are deserving of celebration. So as I mentioned, just wanted to start with a quick overview of the North Carolina accountability model, starting on the left-hand column with the elementary and middle school model. So the indicators that are part of that model are proficiency in reading grades three through eight, math grades three through eight, science grades five and eight. In the middle schools, we have some students who take the end-of-course test in Math 1, so that proficiency also counts for middle schools in the model. We have our English learner progress. And then lastly, the EVOs academic growth, and that's for elementary and middle schools. At the high school level, we also have proficiency in certain EOC subject areas, and those include English 2, Math 1, and Math 3, and then biology. We also, similarly to elementary and middle school, have the English learner progress. We have an indicator that combines student performance on both the ACT as well as the ACT Work Keys Assessment. We have math course rigor, the cohort graduation rate. And then lastly, again, similarly to elementary and middle school, we have the academic growth determined by EVOs, the state growth model. So as a reminder, before we start to share the data, just wanted to do a quick recap of the achievement levels. So the state provides results using four different descriptors. Not proficient than level three, four, and five. Students who are not proficient demonstrate inconsistent understanding of the grade-level content standards and will need support in the next grade or course. If a student achieves a level three or higher on a state assessment, that student is considered grade-level proficient. So the students who score at this level do demonstrate an understanding that sufficient enough of the grade-level content standards, but there might be some support that the student needs to be successful as they matriculate to that next grade or course. And then lastly, students who score at levels four or five, and those students are considered college and career-ready. Those students, again, are ready to move on to that next grade level and should be moving in the direction to be college and career-ready as they move throughout the grades. So again, aligned to state reporting, we're going to report out on both of those descriptors, similarly to the state, for all students throughout the presentation. So just wanted to start with a few highlights of some promising practices that we saw in the data from the 23-24 school year. One is four-year graduation rate increased, performance on the ACT Work Keys Assessment, which again is that workplace readiness assessment. Proficiency for our EL students, that progress proficiency increased. Also wanted to highlight that we had four schools that from 22-23 to 23-24 increased their school performance grade. And then lastly, wanted to highlight that we had three schools that have been removed from the state designation of low performing. So what we also see in the data are some opportunities. And we'll spend some time at the end of the presentation, really talking about the opportunities that we have ahead of us for this school year, based on what we've done in the analysis of the data. So one of those in our district strategy is to increase the number of students that achieve at that grade-level proficiency. So again, that's that level three, four, and five on EOG and EOC assessments. The second one is really focusing on increasing the number of schools that either meet or exceed their growth. That's the academic growth by the state. And then lastly, is decreasing the number of schools identified as low performing, and that's based upon both student proficiency and growth. So these opportunities are part of our larger district strategy, which we'll speak to at the end of the presentation. Also recognizing, we're speaking more to the district-level data. The individual schools are also in the process now of setting their own improvement goals as part of their school improvement plans. We'll be sharing that information out in October, and that will be based on what they have seen in their individual data from the past year. So just to start with reading grades three through eight and English 2, just want to provide a quick overview of each of the performance of our students, both as it relates to grade-level proficiency and college and career readiness. So again, this, what you see here is grades three through eight reading. So our grade-level proficiency is 43.5% of our students are at that level three, four, or five. And then 24.5% of students are scoring at a level four or five. And again, that's that college and career readiness. And you can see that from the year prior, we did see some declines in the proficiency. So next is English 2. So again, 52.8% of our students are at grade-level proficiency, 30.6% are college and career-ready, and those were also declines from the year prior. Moving on to math, and I'll share information about grades three through eight, and then NC Math 1 and NC Math 3. So starting with math grades three through eight, we did see a decline in grade-level proficiency for math grades three through eight. We have 47.5% of our students at grade-level proficiency. And for our college and career readiness, we did see an increase, and we have 31.3% of our students at college and career readiness. So for Math 1, we'll share out separately the students who take Math 1 at the middle school level and then students who take Math 1 at the high school level. So starting with those at the middle school level, so at the three, fours, and fives are grade-level proficiency, we have over 95% of our students scoring at that level, and that's consistent with what we scored the year prior as well. And then we also have 90.1% of our students scoring college and career-ready at the NC Math 1 middle school level. That was an increase from the year before as well. Moving on to NC Math 1 high school, we have 45.7% of our students scoring grade-level proficient and 20.7% at college and career-ready. And we do see that in both areas, GLP and CCR, we saw increases in Math 1 at the high school level. And then lastly, for math, in Math 3, we have 53.3% of our students at grade-level proficiency for Math 3 and 31.4% at CCR, and those were declines from the year before. All right, next, moving on to science, starting with fifth and eighth grades. So for science in fifth and eighth grade, we had 61.2% of our students at grade-level proficiency and 50.3% of our students at college and career readiness. These were declines from the year before. I did want to pause here and mention Shannon shared earlier, the change in science for this next year. So we will have new standards in place, as she mentioned. That does also mean that there will be new assessments that go along with those standards. We will get results back from the science assessments the following year, so schools won't immediately see those results at the end of this school year, but we will have them. They will still be part of the accountability model. But because we'll have two different assessments, we really won't be able to do the comparison as we did here from one year to the next, because it would be like apples to oranges, two different assessments. But we'll still be able to share out the data based on those new assessments. And then in biology, which is our high school science course, 51.6% of students scoring grade-level proficient and 43.9% at college and career-ready, and those were declines from the year prior. Moving on to a high school-specific indicator, which is the ACT and Work Keys. Again, sometimes you'll see that data reported out where both are provided together. I'm going to report out of those separately today. So you will see first, starting with the ACT. So this is the Curriculum and Standards-Based Assessment. This is given to 11th-grade students, and it's looking at college and career readiness. So they take assessments in English, math, reading, and science. But what the state is looking at is their overall composite score. And to be considered proficient, the student has to score at least a 19 or higher. And so in that case, this past year in 23-24, we had 30.9% of students meeting that composite score of the 19 or higher, and that was a decline from the year before. And then we have the Work Keys Assessment. So this is an assessment given to students who are CTE concentrators. And this particular assessment is measuring if students have the foundational workplace skills to succeed. So when they take this assessment, it's really assessing them in three core areas, and that includes applied math, graphic literacy, and workplace documents. And so looking at how they performed on all of those three subtests together, the student has to earn what they consider a silver certificate or higher for us to be given credit for that or proficiency. And we had 61.6% of the students in our district last year to reach that level, and that was an increase from the year before. So now moving on to, again, another high school, obviously, indicator, and that's the cohort graduation rate. So last year, we had 86.7% of our students to graduate in four years that were part of that cohort, and that was an increase from the year before, 22-23. And just wanted to highlight that we do have multiple schools that improve their graduation rate. rate, so I'll pause here for a minute to celebrate those schools that did see an increase in their graduation rate. All right, and to the next indicator, so English learner progress. So again, this particular indicator, and this is elementary, middle, and high school, this is looking at our EL students and how much they are progressing towards English language proficiency. And every individual student has basically a different growth pathway, depending on how they perform on the assessment when they first take it. And then they're given a pathway, and they're working to progress towards that standard at the end of the year. We had 26.6% of our students to meet that, and that was an increase from the year before. And then academic growth. So in the state of North Carolina, we use EVOs as our growth model. That just stands for Education Value Added Assessment System. It does provide data over time showing the amount of progress that students make, and it's comparing it to other students in the same grade level that take the same assessment in that same year. And so schools are given a growth status or designation, and it would either be exceeds growth, meets growth, or does not meet growth. So if we look specifically at schools that either met and/or exceeded growth, we had 55% of our schools to do so. That was a decline from the year before in 22-23. You can see on the right-hand side, we had 13 of our schools to have exceeded, 15 to have met, and 23 that not met. And did want to highlight, we had multiple schools that exceeded growth, so I'll pause here for you to celebrate these schools. And then we also had, again, quite a few schools that met growth that also deserve to be celebrated. All right, and so pulling it all together with our school performance grades. So our school performance grades are based on the school's achievement score, and that counts of 80%, as well as the academic growth, which is 20%. So the total school performance score, they convert it to 100-point scale, and then they use that to determine what the school performance grade is. You can see what the scale is there, and the letter grades that are given, based on how a student performs out of 100. When we look at our overall district level data from last year as it relates to school performance grade, we have 59% of the schools in Gaston County to have achieved a letter grade of either A, B, or C. That was just a slight decline from the 22-23 school year, and then we had 41% of our schools that were at a letter grade of a D or F, and that was an increase from the year before, Did want to highlight, we had four schools that improved their letter grade, and you will see those here on the screen. And now I will turn it over to the Associate Superintendent Tanya Kales to pick up with school designations.
I do want to thank Kelly for being here this evening. She is serving on a jury trial in Charlotte, and so she raced from the courthouse in the rain with her boot and all to be here this evening, so we're excited to have her here. So I want to continue sharing with you where are we standing currently with the performance of our students in our schools. You know, as a state, they identify schools by low performing that achieve a D or F, and either they meet or do not meet their growth standards. Let's look at the current data. Last year, we had 17 low performing schools. This year, we have 19. We had three schools removed from the low performing list, 14 schools remained, and five schools were added. Like to recognize the three schools that were removed. This is a great celebration. As a past Title I school leader myself, that worked very, very hard with my staff and community, this is a great celebration. Let's look at the breakdown of the grades against the growth. So you can see here, we had three schools that made an A that exceeded growth, five that made a B, three that made a C, and then do you see here that we had two that made a D, but they exceeded growth? In the North Carolina model, even if you have a D or F, if you exceed growth, you can exit low performance. So we had two of our schools to exit because of their growth. Here you can see the breakdown of A, B, and C by the schools that met, and the schools that were Ds and Fs that did not, that met as well. But also, the formula says, you have to exceed growth to get off of low performing and you're a D or an F, okay? The standard's difficult for our low performing schools there. You can see here our number of schools that did not meet growth, and you can see the breakdown from A, B, C, and then our Ds and Fs. The 13 schools there that are the Ds and Fs and did not meet growth fall in our low performing school category. But we also have 10 schools that are Bs and Cs that did not meet growth. So this tells us that these are our groups of schools that we can lean into to move to the met and exceed growth, and move more schools off of our low performing list. So what are we going to do about all this data? Because that's what matters most to our schools, to our students, to our teachers, and our families. What's our next moves? You know, Dr. Hushard has shared his focus areas with you many times. The number one focus area is high-quality teaching and learning. That's the work in our schools every day. And Kelly shared with you the opportunities that we have, to increase the number of students that are scoring three, four, and five, to increase the number of schools that meet and exceed growth, while decreasing the number of schools that are listed as low performing. Well, how are we going to do that? We're going to do that by making sure that every school has a high-quality leader leading that school, that every class has a high-qualified and effective teacher. We're going to focus on standard-based instruction. We're going to monitor our students' progress closely and adjust to their needs. And we know through doing that, we will create schools that every school is a premier selection for our families in Gaston County schools. And as a result of that work, we will remove more schools from the low performing list while increasing performance overall. Well, what does that look like? We gave you some handouts and a couple of things that I want to point you to. One is a principal supervisor tool. That is a tool that our executive directors are using when they visit our schools. Why is the tool important? The tool is important because it creates an equal experience for all school leaders in the district. We can closely monitor the work within each one of our schools, adjust quickly to the needs, and respond. You'll also notice that we're now spending more time in the schools. So for our monthly instructional principal meetings, we're actually in the schools' visiting classrooms, aligning on instruction, and talking to each other as leaders of next steps for those schools. In our classrooms, we're providing strong scope and sequence documents, resources for teachers to use. We also are leaning closely into our content teachers and building their capacity so they can build the capacity of the teachers. You'll also notice, how are we monitoring progress? How are we responding? Well, we're diving into the work that our curriculum team has built over time and adjusted this summer. We're diving into our multi-language pilot in our schools. We have several schools that are super excited about this opportunity to address the needs of all students, but specifically our ML students. The last sheet that's in your packet that I want to draw your attention to is what we're calling our K-12 pathways. So we've mapped out across the school year which data points we're going to pay attention to, and we're paying attention to them collectively as a district, so that we can closely monitor progress of our students, of our classrooms, and our schools, and respond quickly. And lastly, what are we doing for our low performing schools? You know, we deployed our district team to our highest need schools to start school so that we could kick off strong. We already talked about our teacher pathway grant. And then also, we're leaning into the concept of our district 90-day planned work, along with our school-based 90-day planned work, so that we make sure we're aligning all of our supports to our schools, to the problems of practice that the schools have identified. So that's what we have for you tonight. I'll invite Kelly back up if anybody has questions about numbers, and then any questions around strategy.
So about math one, and then do you have any idea why, what happened with that three? Because this kid said it's well the years before math one. I'm just curious. That's something that's jumped at me.
So students who, in the accountability model and the data that we reported out for math three, those are students who took math one in middle school. So the students, if they took math one in middle school, then they have to take one assessment in high school, and their data counts, and that's math three. So it's only a subset of all students. Yes, yeah. Correct. And so those are the same students that show up in the NC math three results. So those are the students who took math one in middle school. Yes, yep.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, so, um...
Sorry. The, uh, the two schools that still rated as a D, but they exceeded growth, so they're no longer low performing, we still have our eye on those two schools, right, to make sure that they continue their progress.
Right, that's a good question. Today, we just had a long academic service team meeting, and we've actually named our goals for this upcoming year. Like, which schools do we feel like we're strongly leaning into coming off of the list, while still paying close attention to the schools that just got off the list, or were right at the cusp of getting onto the list? So we're balancing between both of those things at the same time, yes.
Yeah, appreciate you guys trying to divide and conquer. All right. And Ms. Catherine?
I do have a comment. I am just pleased with what I've heard, what I've seen, and the synergy centered around the plan, because if you're excited about the plan, you will pass that on to others. And I want to just say that on Friday, Friday morning, I did have the opportunity to attend a celebration at York Chester Middle School. And when I walked through, well, Dr. Chair and I were there, what, and Mr. Denton, when you walked through the doors, the front doors, you could feel the excitement, and that's an environment that that principal set forth for that school. And when we entered the auditorium, the music was going, and kids were, some had the posters there at the front. But more importantly, the principal had command of her school, because when the young people came in and sat down, they were just chattering here and there, and when she reminded them of what they were supposed to do, things just settled down. So I would assume that the classroom environment is that way. They make it conducive for learning. And in the end, they celebrate together the goals that they've achieved. And hearing you talk now about your plans and what you have recognized as weaknesses here in the district, and some of the strategies that will be implemented, we're good. I am excited about that, and I congratulate you.
Thank you, thank you. I think York Chester is a proof point for this district, and I think we need to spend more time there, as well as another handful of schools that are getting it right, to really learn what does it take to have academic excellence for all children. And as a turnaround principal myself, it really is a total school-community commitment. It's the principal, it's the teachers, it's the students, it's the families, it's the community partners, all together, understanding the plan to move towards excellence for all. And once a school has the smell of the wind of like, we can do this, they set higher goals for themselves, and they continue to press towards what more can be done. And we certainly have schools in Gaston County that we can get in and study more about so that we can replicate and duplicate that work to other schools.
When you talk about the principal supervisor, in, in our meeting last week, we heard from the supervisors, and they talked about their trips to the schools and how they enjoyed being in the schools. And you got to have that special bonding when you're there in order for all of the components to work effectively. And when you can hear that, a, one of, I think it was Mr. Doran, said, you know, he enjoys visiting his schools. And you hear that coming from the mouths, and then I heard Ms. Henderson say, don't worry about it, we're here to help you. That makes that difference. You're establishing a relationship, and you're going to create rigor when you do that. And I just appreciate the strategies that are being used in our district. As you say it, you're working to see that every child succeeds. And in order to do that, they must believe in themselves and establish trust in their leadership, and I appreciate that.
Well, just this weekend, Tyler sent me the Google Doc that has all of the visits that have occurred since school opened, and I can see the notes. So what that means is that now, as an academic service team, we can look at the notes across all schools each month, and we can see the trends and patterns of what are the needs that we need to address across all schools, what are the needs for a subset of schools, and what are the needs for individual schools. And what I so appreciate about all four executive directors is they're in the game to win it with the principal, walking side by side with them. It's not just about accountability, it's support with accountability in the work.
Ms. Chair?
Well, I was obviously there too, and Dr. White, the... And, and you could just see it in the kid's face. So I'm looking forward to that continuing, and she's been doing it for years. But to, to piggyback on Dot, in our meetings last week, the one thing that really impressed me is that the consistency that y'all have established from level to level, from school to school, it's still giving the latitude to, you know, to emphasize their personalities and so forth, but that's going to give us consistent data, that's going to give you consistent observational points. But we are truly, what's that saying, that we're a system of schools rather than individuality? I mean, there's still that, but, but that's going to be, I already see that it's already a game changer, because everybody is on the same page about what our goals and strategies are. And that's making a huge difference, in my opinion, already.
I agree. I think what Kelly shared with us is the student outputs or the outcomes. What we're focusing on, what is the inputs, and the inputs are our daily behaviors to make sure that our children are getting what they need, so that they can achieve on the assessment at the end.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So any more comments or questions? If not, thank y'all for your presentation. All right, we added item 12, discussion of the new baseball turf field for charitable.
Yes, we did. Okay, may I start?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry that information that I sent to you, to you other board members, didn't arrive until last night, but I truly did not understand the time sensitivity until I talked with the city manager, Brian Dalton, during the football game on Thursday night. And I think I explained to each and every one of you why this is a time-sensitive issue. Now, I understand Mr. Moore was concerned that this has not been brought up to the operations committee, which is a process that we do use, and the reason that it has not been brought up to the committee is because there simply was not enough time. But I would like to add something that I just now found out, that on August the 29th, there was a conference call between Athletic Director Matt Powers... 29th, there was a conference call between athletic director Matt Powers, Principal Sean Bubers, and Gary from the operations committee, Gary, I don't know Gary's last name that works for us.
Gary Carter.
Gary Carter.
Is our director of facilities.
And, um, let's see, they had Brian Dalton, and this, this phone call was actually, actually took place on August the 29th, okay? Therefore, the scope of this project was given to Gary, however, nothing was submitted to the operations committee on September the 9th. And I do think that there was an additional meeting in Cheriville, Mr. Harvey, you can correct me if I am wrong, on the afternoon of the 9th, which was after the operations committee had met. So therefore, the next opportunity for an operations meeting to get all of this information would be during October. And then, by the time it gets to the board on the 3rd Monday in October, this is going to be, um, too far out to get the work done. And when I say time-sensitive, it's for two issues. First and foremost, if this particular company, and I think Ms. Harvey is familiar with this company, because they do work in Charlemagne Schools, if this company can come to Cheriville on the September 30th, 30th, they are guaranteeing completion by December the 23rd, unless there's inclement weather. And that, of course, gives them a few more weeks before this ball field is needed by our high school players, which is February the 1st. Now, as long as this takes place, February the 1st, Cheriville High School will go in there and they'll have their regular season. And then, after the regular season from the high school is over, the American Legion Cheriville Post 100, I always use this field, and I gave you the background information on Post 100. We do have a standing agreement, which is a school-community agreement, that allows the city of Cheriville and the American Legion to use this baseball field. And I could attest to the fact that they spend just as much money, if not more, on this field than Gaston County schools spend on this field. And this past summer, they did host the state tournament for the Legion. It was a big success, about $4 million poured into Gaston County, not just in Cheriville. With the tourism bill that we have in place, the players who come to Cheriville, they, the players themselves have to stay in a Gaston County hotel. As you know, Cheriville does not have a hotel yet, but they stay in Gaston County hotels, not Cleveland County or Lincoln County. And that poured in a lot of money all over the county, as well as eating establishments and things of this nature. So what the American Legion is proposing to do is to add turf to this field, and one of the reasons turf needs to be added, they are trying to get the Southeast Regional bid that's come to Cheriville starting in the season 2026-27. And in order for that bid to be given to Post 100, things that have been suggested by the individuals who met with the American Legion, such as having the turf added, those things are contingent upon a greater possibility of that bid coming to Post 100. And I think the only other thing will have to be covering some of the stands, or these stands that, with a type of owning, such, such shape or something of that nature. But as far as money coming from Gaston County schools, not one red cent would come from Gaston County schools. There is a Cheriville patron who is a business owner, and he is a large property owner in the surrounding counties, who has given $200,000. The American Legion has given $50,000. And the city of Cheriville has donated $237. That totals...
Two.
Thousand dollars, I'm sorry. All of these things total $487,000, and that's the total cost. And I just sent to each of you board members and Dr. Hushard, where this particular turf company has sent an indication where they will not exceed $487,000. That is the final cost. Now, if any of you have any questions, I would be glad to try to answer these.
I don't think anybody has any questions. I think we need to do this. Problem is, how do we do it quickly? Could Dr. Hushard write a letter to the company, and we brought it, that we will do that, or, you know, if we all are in agreement, why don't, we can't just say that, leave it up to Ms. Harvey to deal through the, the particulars this week, and then, then go with it from there? If she's satisfied, all of us say we're satisfied, and then let it go?
Yeah, I don't want anybody to think that I'm against it, because I'm 100% for it.
Yeah, I heard you say you were for it.
But, you know, it's the, it's the same process we went through with Greer. You know, it was, it was talked about for, for months before we, before we finally ended up, you know, voting on it and it coming to pass.
Is this the turf for the football field?
Right, right.
Now, that $750,000 was a gift from the city.
It's coming from the city of Gaston.
Is that, is that the, the entire, the total cost?
The football's a whole lot more expensive than just baseball.
But it's no more than 750.
No, no, no. But what I'm saying is, we, we had a process that we followed, we went through, you know, everybody, everybody had, you know, was able to put their eyes on it, and figure out exactly what needed to be done and all that. But the issue here is, we, we just, we just figured it out, and I know it's time-sensitive, I'm with you on it. Like I said, I'm 100% for it, but I think that we need to, to have Ms. Harvey and Dr. Hushard, and possibly, uh, Mr. Dalton from Cheriville, whoever, us get together and try to figure out how we can get this thing expedited, so we can, we can move forward in the process.
And the managing aspect.
Right.
Okay, the managing aspect, I understand, and Mr. Dalton said anybody from Gaston County schools is welcome to come every single day. But there's one thing that I would like to bring up about managing. Uh, I do know when we have big projects, for example, let's say Stewart-Cramer High School, I think a former principal was assigned to go there, make sure to manage the property. And, and we know, even though we had oversight from Gaston County, look what happened to the baseball field there and that retaining wall? And that ended up costing, what, $1.2 million? We had oversight at Stanley Middle School, look what happened to that roof. Even though that roof is going to be completed, sometimes we cannot help when things happen.
I understand that, but they were our projects, and that, that's, that's where, that concerns me. They were still our projects. They weren't, they weren't a separate entities' projects.
Well, Dot, if you would like for the money to come to Gaston County schools and a check be written from here, I'm sure Gary could do that for us. I mean, it can be, I mean, it's not like Cheriville's trying to have their project, it's just a time-sensitive thing, and this is win-win for our school.
And I get that. I think that's the big thing, and it has nothing to do with us and, and Cheriville. I, I think that our processes have always been that, whether it's reciprocity or not, and we have a lot of them, that they're managed through our system.
Dot, there's never been reciprocity as far as, as far as the tennis courts go, as far as the middle school baseball field, that does not exist for Gaston County schools. That middle school baseball team has always played on city property. That field is ready for those boys to go play when it's time for playing. Not one, not one bill has been sent. Let's hear that.
I don't think I'm saying that wrong.
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Denton?
Listen, we're all in agreement here that we want to do this. Why don't we let Dr. Hushard and Ms. Harvey work this out, and come back to him by the end of the week, and if they approve it, I think we should approve it. Can we put that in some sort of motion?
We're agreeing. I'm just not saying what I'm, I'm not saying what I'm...
Can I put that in some sort of motion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Um, Bessie and, and Dr. Hushard, I mean, y'all have done plenty of projects. We, we wanna help Cheriville out, right? They've been good to us, and, you know, I definitely want to be good to them. So can we pull our resources, human capital, and can we work through this to get this done? And I'm sure this board would agree if we need to come back for a special meeting to, we got, we got time that we could announce it to the community, and if we need to, come back. Or if there's a way where we can approve it tonight, subject to, you know, the operations team working through the specifics, but can, can we do this for Cheriville?
That's what I like to say, subject to.
We're all in agreement.
So let me share, normally, we do a project, we will develop a scope, and take bids on, and that work in the scope. So really, our team hasn't even seen the scope. We don't know what type of drainage has been in there, we don't know what type of turf, so we need some time, if you're asking me, to study what the scope of work is. We also have an insurance requirement that anyone who works on our property must be a part of, and that's not written into the scope either.
If you're, in the, in the information I submit to you, it's actually in the contract talking about the liability insurance, it's in that attachment I sent you.
Yes, ma'am, and I saw that. And we have a higher threshold and a different process for ensuring folks who work on, we haven't had very long to look at it, and we're, we all want turf, we just need some time to understand scope, construction material, design, it affects other things, runoff, and there's just a lot to do when you build a field. And we just want some time to better understand what the scope of work is.
What's the possibility of this getting done by the end of next week, so they can start on that following Monday, September 30th?
It's hard for me to answer that, because I have not spent much time with it, so I will, I can, I can better answer that, and our team, Ms. Harvey, our team, and our engineering department can, can look at it very quickly, and I can tell you, but I don't, I don't know, I can't answer that right now, but I will be able to.
Mr. Grace?
Mr. Chair, um, I think like most on the board, we see the value in this, I see the value in this, making sure that we are good team players with our communities, our foundations, our cities, I mean, it's a win-win, there's no doubt to that. But like many have said, that, I think we need some time to look over it, and to Ms. Lovitz's point, I understand there's a timeline. Since we do have a proposed contract, can I suggest that we take this up in closed session, to talk about that contract and have some consultation, and then come out of closed session with a decision to move forward?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And may I, may I say one thing?
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
We're just talking, 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 and we all are in agreement to see this done, but we need to speak with Ms. Harvey. I don't want to throw her under the bus, but we need to speak with her and get her professional opinion, and get her ideas and suggestions. After all, she's the person in charge, so respectfully, I think that would be the protocol there. And certainly, if this is something that we need to take up in closed session, let's do it, but let's respect the leadership and the person in charge.
Yeah, we'll get our input in close, and Ms. McGraw, our board attorney, advises too on this. So what we'll do, it's on the agenda for a closed session, so after we finish up, we'll go into closed session. Um, okay, where we're at now?
We approved the 270.
Thank you, every minute. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, this brings us to our superintendent comments.
Now, but before you...
It would be, I would be remiss if I failed to say this, because it's been on my mind. I want to say to our SRO officers across this county, thank you, thank you, thank you for the job that you do each and every day. We talk about our classrooms, we talk about teachers, we talk about everything. We need to also acknowledge that none of those things can be done if we don't feel like we're safe in the environment. So based on what we've heard in the news recently, and how happy I saw the SRO officer at Yorkchester on Friday, I just want to say to all of the officers in Gaston County that protect our children, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Dot, and we agree with you. We're blessed to have a great partnership with the county, and especially being ranked number one or number two every year in the state of North Carolina, but we have to keep going each and every day with the environment we live in. All right. Dr. Ms. Hushard?
Thank you, Chairman Ramsey. I have several items of interest to share with the board and the public, and I second Ms. Guthrie, your words, thanking SRO officers. It is crucial the work they do. So first, I want to start with tomorrow, Tuesday, September 17th, is Constitution Day. It marks the anniversary of our signing of the United States Constitution in 1787. So we are planning to distribute a pocket-sized paper of the Constitution to all eighth graders to commemorate the important occasion. We also are sending to all 30,000 students and our teachers resources for them to use for discussions and further study of the Constitution. October is countdown to College Month, when high school counselors encourage students to complete the necessary steps to, to complete their college applications, financial aid, and other information, when they complete that. So we want our high school students and their parents to know that this is the time to start thinking about college, and take the necessary steps to make sure applications and other items are complete. And it is a busy time, especially for many of our juniors who prepare for that process. So students and parents, any that have questions about this process, please reach out to your schools, to your high school counselor, and I know they will be happy to help. I'd like to share with everyone that we have four high schools that were recognized today by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association for their outstanding sportsmanship, with zero ejections for last year. Those schools are Ashbrook, East Gaston, Forest View, Underhust, and Highlight. As well, East Gaston High School was the recipient of the Wells Fargo Cup. We're very proud of our high schools and their sportsmanship and all they do on the field and on the court. Looking ahead on the calendar, Thursday, October 10th, is our parent-teacher conference day. Students will be dismissed at lunchtime, and parent conferences will be held in the afternoon. Parents are encouraged to contact a child's school to schedule a conference. Then we want to remind everyone that Friday, October 11th, is an optional teacher work day, which means no school for students, and report cards for the first nine weeks will be distributed on Thursday, October 17th. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to conclude my comments by sharing some information about school safety. In recent weeks, schools across North Carolina have experienced situations involving inappropriate, suspicious, and threatening messages on social media. These types of messages, even when they are determined to be non-credible, create safety concerns for the school and the community, have adverse effects on student attendance, and divert school personnel's attention away from what is most important, that of teaching and learning. It is important for everyone to know that we all take school-related threats seriously, and involve law enforcement and our SROs to investigate the situation fully. We are fortunate to have dedicated resource officers assigned to all of our schools, and they play a crucial role in our ongoing efforts to ensure school safety for students, employees, and all who visit our schools. We have a strong commitment to safe schools because of our excellent partnership with law enforcement and our justice system, and continue to support, getting support from our parents and community. Most important, we want parents to hear us say that school safety is our top priority. We begin and end every school day thinking about school safety. Again, it is our top priority every day, and we value and appreciate parents and communities' trust in us in providing the school safe learning environment for their children. And finally, Mr. Chairman, as I continue to visit our schools across the district, I want to share with you how impressed I am with the high quality of teaching and learning that I see every day in every school. I want to say we are truly blessed with hard-working, dedicated teachers here at Gaston County. Mr. Chairman, thank you. That is my report.
Thank you. And for a closed meeting, I wanted to recognize Todd Higgins for his new pep rallies. He's been to North Gaston, East Gaston, and I'm hearing that he's coming to Cheriville's homecoming this Friday. So it's been a big hit, and I'm glad he's out and about showing a special Friday night football that we have in Gaston County schools. So as we close, I just want to thank for the support of the board and Gaston County schools. We also had a birthday this week, September the 14th, Lee Demmon turned 70. Seventy.
Man, I'm just tickled to death. I can't wait till next week.
So I need a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Cherry?
All right. Mr. Chair, we need to go into closed session in North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A, 3, and 6, for consultation with attorney and personnel.
Mr. Stevens seconds it. All in favor? All right. Thank y'all.
We're back in open session. I'd like to call on Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for Gaston County Schools to enter into a contract with the City of Cheriville, local government to local government, to engage a qualified vendor acceptable to Gaston County Schools to install turf at Cheriville High School baseball field, specs to be approved by Gaston County Schools. Such project will be managed by Gaston County Schools using a normal contracting procedures and requirements. Gaston County Schools will not incur any cost for installation or regular periodic maintenance of said field.
Second.
Ms. Chairman, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Now I need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Stevens, second. Ms. Guthrie, all in favor? Good evening, good night.